No, I didn't, but she liked to watch it. She's not campaigning anymore, so she has free time.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. And at this time, I'd like to give the opening to Councillor Demian Penn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I saw that I had opening the day after the federal election, it was pretty clear that my topic today was already predetermined. Obviously, elections can be unpredictable. So I knew I could not write my opening before today. Because who knew what kind of changes we would see? Who would be the winners? The losers? The ones on the outside looking in? And the irrelevance? Forgive my cynical tone here, but it turns out that I could have easily written this opening months ago. Who were the winners? Well, simply put, in my opinion, Canada has 338 writings, and therefore, 338 MPs that have won seats. These are the winners of this election. And for the vast majority of these elected MPs, they were the same victors two years ago. 338 winners in a country with a population in excess of 30 million is a very small ratio of winners. So who were the losers? Right off the bat, every Canadian taxpayer. Justin Trudeau chose to spend $600 on what essentially amounted to a referendum on if Canadians wanted an election. Talking to anyone in a coffee shop, you could have easily deduced that we did not. But Justin Trudeau has never been known to actually have his pulse on the feelings of the average Canadian. The virtually unchanged results of this election show this sentiment to be true. Canadians did not want an election, especially when we consider the price tag attached to it and the state of our current fiscal forecast going forward. That brings me to the next group of losers in this election. Any individual under 35 that does not already own their house or have a healthy nest egg that they are prepared to crack open. Housing is on the verge and has really escaped the grasp of some of being unattainable for young families. Partnering this with Canada's abysmal economic recovery, mountainous debt incurred due to the pandemic, and soaring inflation rates, the future of owning your first home is bleak at best. Many of the major parties acknowledge the housing crisis that already existed and has been exacerbated by COVID. But only time will tell if minority government, propped up by a second party, will be able to exact real transformation of the housing market. If yesterday was any example, it is one of an individual that does not want to play with others in the sandbox and would rather take his toys and go home. And finally, the last losers to discuss, Western Canada. Once again, Western Canadians did their civic duty, went out to the polls, and were left with little to no meaningful amount of votes to represent their interests. Even while voters in B.C. were waiting in line to cast their ballot, a check of their phone would have told them that their vote would have no impact on the governing party as a Liberal minority was announced while the polls were still open in British Columbia. I will leave it to much smarter individuals than myself on what the end democratic structure would be. However, it is clear that Canada needs to see some movement on electoral reform. For the second election in a row, Conservatives won the popular vote but got decimated in seat count. When 7,000 square kilometers of the Greater Toronto Area has the biggest influence on who will ultimately make decisions for farmers, the management of our gas reserves, hydroelectric production pipelines, and the other 10 million square kilometers of Canadian citizens, there needs to be change. There is enough division across Canada right now. And if the leaders of our nation are serious about wanting to begin mending bridges, this would be a great place to look at. So, in the long list of losers and this very short list of winners, I will leave you with this. To me, this was by far the most uninspiring election I have ever been part of. And winning or losing, I feel like Canada, as a whole, lost. And if you disagree, that's okay too. That's the beauty of the democratic process that we all just participated in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Penner. Councillor, we have the agenda in front of us, looking for a motion to approve. Councillor Hebert, second by Councillor Siemens, any comments?
No comment.
Call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. We have the minutes of September 7th, 2021. The regular council meeting starts on page 1. Looking for a motion to approve. Councillor Hebert, second by Councillor Penner, any comments?
No comments.
Call for the question, all those in favor. That is carried. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none. We will, it is just a little past 7:35. We will move to the public hearing. This is variance V 2021-19, referring to P21 PTH 52 West. At this point, we will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. Mr. Workington, could you please introduce this file?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is an application for variance for the civic property. Mr. Mayor, as you noted, file V-2021-19. The owner of the property is 350-8030 Manitoba LTD. The applicant for the variance is Jake Fair. Purpose of the variance application is to allow for a total of three parking stalls, whereas retail sales proposed for the site would require a total of four parking stalls. The applicant is proposing to use the building for a retail operation, but is only able to accommodate three parking stalls on-site as provided in the attached site plan. Notices as required under the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file with respect to review of the application. The, with the retail grocery store planned on-site, as is noted in the requirements for developed on-site parking stalls are required per City of Steinbach zoning bylaw 2100. In respect of the requested reduction in the number of parking stalls to be provided, there are two precedents that council has considered in the area. File V-2017-23, a property across the highway. That was considered in 2017. Council did approve that application for a variance for parking stalls subject to the owner entering into a shared parking agreement with a neighboring property. And subsequently, a conditional use application in 2018 for the same property proposed a funeral home to be located on that site with council denying that application. While the scope of this particular request is not as significant, administration reports that are attached do indicate concern whether or not the proposed number of parking stalls being three are actually possible to be configured for the site as it exists. Therefore, administration recommends that the application be denied.
Thank you, Mr. Workington. Is the applicant here tonight? Do you wish to speak? Okay, take the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then you can continue.
Can I take off my mask, or?
No, you'll have to leave your mask on.
Okay, my name is Jake Fair. I own the building at 21 Pathway 52. And basically, what I'm trying to do is, we're gonna be, I want to open up a Mexican grocery store, so it's a little bit more unique. Don't think we would have as much traffic there as a regular grocery store would be. So, the issue with that is, they were suggesting to put parking stalls in the back, which I think is, it doesn't really work for us because our face is up front, first of all. And next thing too is, I have to get it developed. That, I got a rough estimate, supposed to cost me over $120,000, somewhere in there. And don't know if I can afford to spend that much money into the parking lots in the back. Plus, people would have to come around the back to the front, that wouldn't really work. And also, we've got quite a few parking spots along the road. I think there's about four or five that would help that. But I guess, that doesn't really consider as far as, I can't really use that as far as the township rules go. So, I mean, yeah, that's basically what I'm proposing. I'm not sure if you have any questions.
Counselors, any, go ahead, Counselor Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Fair, just a clarification on a couple of things. So, the official request that you're making is for a variation to allow you to have only three parking stalls instead of four. My first question is, it sounds like from what you're saying, that you're not wanting to make any parking stalls at all? Because you're talking about the cost of doing the parking, is that correct?
I would consider making more in the future because I think that building is gonna be too small for me. We're gonna have to add on. If everything goes well, then I would consider making it, getting the back developed and making more parking spots in the back.
Just to follow up, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
It really sounds like we've got a misunderstanding what the application actually is. Because what you're actually asking us is to allow you to have three parking stalls rather than one. So what you're saying here, you're talking about maybe later putting parking stalls in the back. But you're actually talking about not wanting to put any in for the time being, which is not what the application is here for. Is that, or maybe administration can comment on this? But this really sounds quite different from what we've actually got before us.
Right now, we have three that we could use. That's the plan that I drew up. I think we should have enough room there to put three in. And that's concrete there already. Just the driveway, that's still gravel there. What I would suggest is just paving, just putting concrete in the front little section. That way, it's all concrete. And then I would have three parking spots instead of four. So that would just basically, the township is asking for four. I can only supply three for now.
Okay, Counselor Penner. I just want to check with administration. Mr. Workington, did you want to say something?
Only if council is asking for clarification of the application.
Do you want clarification?
Yes, I'd like clarification.
We'll take care of this first, Counselor Penner, then your question.
My question to administration is, is that actually doable, three parking stalls there?
Well, if, I'll refer council back to the report from engineering that is on file. While the applicant has provided a sketch along with the application indicating that three parking stalls are possible, and as he mentioned, the three parking stalls that are proposed as shown in the sketch, they are being represented on a section of the land parcel that is already hard-surfaced with concrete. However, based on the information that was provided, it is not confirmed whether or not those three parking stalls are actually possible to be configured in a way that complies with City of Steinbach zoning bylaw. The space may in fact only permit an actual configuration of two parking stalls according to the required dimensions.
Okay. Okay, Counselor Penner.
Through you to administration.
Go ahead.
My question is, hypothetically, if we approved the variance right now for three parking stalls and they expanded the business, can we require the additional parking at the time they expand the business? Or once we approve this variance, that's it? They only need three parking stalls?
Based on the application, it would, depending on how council words its approval, should it wish to proceed with that for this file, it could specifically state that the variance is subject to only the existing building, that if any expansion would be proposed in the future, the variance would no longer be applicable.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Have you tried to work out a shared parking agreement with your neighbors at all?
I approached my back.
He's to go to the mic.
Can you come to the mic, please?
I approached the back, the people behind us for entrance and stuff. But I have not, no. I have not asked my neighbors.
Okay. I do have a question for administration. So technically, according to what our bylaws state for parking, that one of those parking, well, both those parking stalls, the first one will always be against a building, and you need 10 feet.
Correct.
That only leaves six feet for the next parking stall. So technically, there might only be one parking stall there.
That's right, because minimum width for parking stalls is nine feet.
Yeah. And then the next stall, right to the front, is 14 feet. Again, you'd need 10 feet because you have, it's against a building wall, leaving four feet for a parking stall.
Correct.
So even if we give a, like, where do you get the thirds? Where would you get the third parking stall from if we're giving a variance of three?
That's, yeah, that's accurate. And again, because it's, there's limited information provided, it isn't confirmed whether or not the three stalls proposed could actually be physically developed.
Counselor Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And my question is either for the applicant or administration. I'm just trying to decide where this is best directed. Why are we looking at an application to reduce the requirement to three parking stalls when we don't actually know whether three stalls can actually go there? I mean, why are we even, why is this? Because if we approve this and you can't put three stalls in, then nothing happens. And then this has all been pointless. Like, why is this even here at this stage? And I'm not sure whether it's the applicant that needs to answer that or administration. But this is unusual. We don't normally have it this fuzzy.
Yes, actually, I'll have a follow-up question once you answer that.
I guess I didn't have the information exactly what you need to have, how far away. And maybe I should have probably done some more research on it. But yeah, I guess I didn't have the information on how far that I could stay away, that I have to stay away from the building and all that kind of stuff, so.
Yeah, because my question to you is, where are you proposing that third spot to be? If we give you a variance for three spots, you have to have three clear spots. And in this drawing, we can't see three clear spots.
Yeah, like, coming back again, like I said, I didn't have the information on how, like, what the city rules are as far as that goes. So, I mean, if you're saying that I have to stay away 10 feet, then I'm basically, I would say there's only probably what, room for one, the way you're explaining it, right?
Mm-hmm. Counselor Penner's got a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to administration.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Workington, how wide does an accessible stall need to be? Because it's noted in the engineer's report that there would be one accessible stall. And the reason I ask this, and without trying to plan this on behalf of the applicant, I'm looking more at the total footage of 30 feet and just seeing, because you can always overhang a parking stall a little bit past the building.
I don't have that specific information available at the moment.
But would there be a requirement for an accessible stall?
My understanding is at least one of the stalls would need to be accessible, correct?
Because by, sorry, follow up?
Go, yeah, follow up.
By my calculation there, we have 30 feet, 19 feet are required for the two regular stalls. One up 10 feet against the building, nine feet. So that leaves 11 feet of play to make something potentially work. Offhand, would you be able to, do you know if it would be less than 11 feet, or are you not?
I would not speculate until I can actually confirm that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for, any further questions for administration or the applicant? Go ahead, Counselor Hebert.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Fair.
Can you take the podium, please?
I'm looking at the diagram, and I realize that you're probably gonna have yourself working there and maybe somebody else. So if your own staff uses one or two of those parking spots and you're saying that you're not going to have a lot of traffic, but you're gonna have, you could have substantial traffic, that leaves you down to, at the best, if that configuration works, one or two parking spots. That's a real concern already right there, that you don't have enough room for customers.
So, what I would do is, my staff and I, we would park in the back, in the back of the building, which is, there's a lot of room there. So, I mean, that would leave the front for customers. And mind you, we only need four parking spots for the size of the building. We have already four parking spots on the side of the road that we could use too, if we could use that as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, the, I just have a comment for the applicant. But what we require, the city bylaw requires you to handle your parking on your lot, right? Yes, there is city parking on the street. But we require you, for your lot, for your business, you need to handle your parking on your lot, okay? And there will be some people that'll park on the street, they have every right to. But you have to make sure that before we give you, before we let you go ahead with this, that you can comply and you can carry the parking that you need on your lot, okay? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I believe that my question was answered because my question to administration would have been, is you allowed to park two vehicles in the back when it's not a parking lot? So, thank you. I think you answered my question.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay, thank you. I will now ask if there's anyone here with objections, comments, or questions to this file. Okay, I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with questions, comments, or objections to this file? Okay. At this time, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Susan Penner?
I would like to make a motion to approve if there's enough space. It's a bit difficult, like Counselor Swagstra said. But if there is enough space for the three parking stalls, I would make a motion to approve. And that's also subsequent to if there's changes made to the building, an expansion, that type of thing, that they would have to comply and add the additional parking.
Anyone, do we have a second? Okay, Counselor Swagstra, go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fact is, we want to encourage business and growth in our community, and we want to be reasonable as well. Starting up a business is already very difficult and very costly. I would hate for this business to not be able to set up due to one parking stall. It already has hard surface there, which is perfect. According to the estimates, you know, adding that one parking, having to add that additional parking stall would just change the engineering of that site and cost upwards of $100,000. And I think it would be very unfortunate if this business would be prevented from starting due to the one spot. So that is why I have made the motion, but also conditional on the fact that if they grow, like he's hoping to or thinks they will, then as they get more cash, that type of thing, then they will have more financial means to put that parking in.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Counselor Penner that I do not want to stop a business from being able to establish in a location because of one parking stall. That does seem, I'm just not prepared to do that. To be perfectly honest, based on what I'm hearing here, I'm not convinced that the one parking stall is actually the issue. But that being, and it sounds, again, I'm not convinced that this will work. But I'm certainly open to, if it does work, if there is a way to have three parking stalls there properly, then I'm willing to support that. So I'm not gonna have the city be the reason that that can't go ahead based on one parking stall. But again, it really would be better if we had better information, it would be much better if we had information that we actually can put three stalls there. But unfortunately, if the applicant cannot put three stalls there, this variance only covers that, and then it doesn't go ahead. But at least we've done our bit, recognizing that it's not an unreasonable request to go from four stalls to three and to be able to go ahead with the business at this early stage. But, so yes, I will support the motion.
Anything further, Counsel? Before I go ask for closing comments, I do have one question for you, Counselor Penner. Are you open, if it doesn't work, we can't get three stalls there, are you open to letting the motion stand if the applicant can get an agreement with a neighbor to have parking? To make up that extra stall or extra two stalls, whatever needs to be made up?
Yes, absolutely. And I'm not convinced they can't. The configuration of the parking, however the three would look, I mean, it may look a little bit different, once they talk to maybe a city planner about it, for example. But if that doesn't work out, a shared services agreement would also be a good way to move ahead.
Thank you. Well, anything in closing?
Nothing further.
Well, Counsel, I'm gonna support the motion. My business as well is basically built corner to corner. I don't, I've got two parking stalls in my driveway. And I lease spaces from my neighbor, and that's how I can operate. That gives me the spaces I need for my customers and my employees. And I would really encourage the applicant to go make a deal with your neighbor and buy a couple stalls per month off of them. It's not that expensive, but it definitely can help you get open. You put up signs, this is parking for your store. People know that, and that's how this can work. And so, providing that you can get the stalls or get a shared access agreement for parking, a parking agreement, then yes, if that happens, I will support this motion as well. So, Counsel, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, Counsel, we have no delegations. So we'll move on to the reports and recommendations of city manager. 8A, the event center design. This is the design contract award. Counsel, there was a package in your mailboxes earlier today. Mr. Workington, could you please introduce this file?
Mayor, this, as you mentioned, was an information package that was provided to councillors in their mail bins earlier today. This does represent the background information with respect to the review and recommendation for award to the detailed design contract and also the provision of architectural and engineering services for the proposed Southeast Event Center in Steinbach. The city issued a public request for proposal call on April 9th, 2021 for these services, with the submission period closing September 2nd, 2021. City received five proposals from the firms as noted in the report. The city also issued specific evaluation criteria for the proposal call, which included total fees, however, included three other categories under which the proposals would be evaluated. Based on that review and recommendation report as submitted, recommendation is to award the contract for these services to Vernreimer Architecture, Inc. for the amount noted of $1,898,430, including disbursements. So, recommendation from administration is for council to approve by resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Workington. Counsel, how would you like to approve, or proceed? I want you to approve, but, Counselor Swagstra.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make the motion to approve.
Second by Councillor Siemens. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an important step forward for the Southeast Event Center that we're looking forward to seeing constructed. Obviously, part of having it constructed is make sure that it's designed properly. And that, of course, is what this contract is for. Obviously, the cost of the architectural and engineering services is significant. But that's because this is a significant project and one that is quite specialized. As the city manager noted, we did issue a public request for proposal. And so, various firms had the opportunity to submit their bids. The city received five proposals and put it through a rigorous approval process, as it should be. And so, looking at factors such as the experience of the proponent, the experience of key personnel in terms of their knowledge of this type of project, project understanding and methodology, and also, of course, the fees. And so, when you put all those components together and weigh them against each other, there was one firm that clearly outperformed the others. And so, we want to get the best value for our money, and we want to have the best event And so, we want to get the best value for our money, and we want to have the best event center design possible. This is going to be the biggest project the city has ever done. This is going to be at the center of our city. We want to make sure it's designed properly. So I definitely think we should move ahead with this, with this award.
Thank you, Counselor. Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, as stated already, this is a critical piece to the Southeast Event Center that we are building. Once this contract has been awarded and they go through the processes for all the fine architectural and engineering services, and it is, once we have this piece of the information back, then we can truly go to tender on the facility. So this is a critical piece, and we do need a lot of the expertise and a good understanding of what our project is all about. And I think we've got that. I like the process that was used. We didn't just look at the price, they looked at all the other things that were already stated, and it is an important piece, and I think it is, I vote in favor of the motion.
Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing? Well, counsel, as Counselor Swagster and Counselor Siemens both alluded to, there was a rigorous process that our administration went through, and just talking with Mr. Workteen a little bit, he said they had to go through the whole final approval process, and they had to look at all the factors, and he told me it was very tight along. It was, there was a lot of, like, these were very good corporations that put in the proposal, and they knew what they were doing, and, but in the end, the Vernreimer Architecture, Inc., they came up, they came up ahead, and so they are recommending that we approve it. And counsel, this is a huge project for our city, and this is one of the first steps. And this is one of those steps now that it shows, it'll show the residents of Steinbach, it'll show the, our partnership groups, the stakeholders we're working with, it'll show everyone, the both levels of government, how serious we are because we're going forward with this, because this is a big step to getting the project done. We'll call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counsel, number nine, administration, we've got the accounts payable at the back of the book. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Penner. Any comments?
No comments.
Call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We have 9B, the financial statements, August 31st, 2021, also in the back of the book. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counselor Siemens. Any comments?
No comments.
Okay, we'll call for the question, all those in favor? That is carried. Counsel, we have 9C, this is bylaw 2185, this is a street renaming, first and second reading. This is on page 18. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Mr. Mayor, this is a proposal to proceed with first and second reading for bylaw 2185, which is Henry Place renaming. This is a housekeeping matter, just due to a survey that was being conducted in the area. It was discovered that this particular section of public roadway was never formally named and therefore not registered at Winnipeg land titles. In order to clean up this oversight, this bylaw is being recommended, therefore, do recommend first and second reading be approved by counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Hebert, motion?
To approve.
Second by Counselor Siemens, go ahead.
Like administration says, it's a formality, it was left out, and should be no problem to go ahead and name it Henry Place.
Anything further?
I think the good thing here is, street signs are already up.
Call for the question, all those in favor? That's carried. We'll go right into second reading, looking for a motion for second reading. Counselor Siemens, second by Counselor Hebert. Any comments?
No further.
Call for the question, all those in favor? That is carried. Okay, we have the bylaw 2186, this is the local improvement 2022-01. This is referring to the Southeast Event Center, this is first reading. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a proposed local improvement bylaw 2186 and related local improvement plan 2022-01, with respect to the proposed development of the Southeast Event Center. This is a recommendation for first reading. This does cover the overall project itself and identifies the project as being the development of the center, with a total cost of just under $42.5 million being estimated. However, the total debt amount being proposed under this local improvement will be $7.5 million, as is provided in the attached documentation, with other funding sources being a federal and provincial investing in Canada Infrastructure Program grant, and also private sector funding, as well as City of Steinbach contributions from its recreation reserve to make up the balance of funding. This will proceed with advertising, as is required under the municipal act, to a public hearing later this fall, at which time it is anticipated that second reading would be recommended. At this point, recommendation of first reading is being made.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counselor Penner, second. Go ahead.
Well, I think it's pretty incredible that we are going to have a $42 million facility, and that we will only need to borrow $7.5 million in order to make that happen. I mean, that is, that really is incredible. Obviously, it's due to private donations, funding from other levels of government, as well as saving that the city has done, and we're really, I guess, reaping the rewards of all the work that's been done over the past 10 years plus in getting it to this position. But this is very exciting, and it's very exciting that it's actually starting to happen.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reiterate Counselor Penner's comments, this is a fantastic public, example of a public-private partnership, and with the foresight of previous councils of putting funds away into the rec reserve of an amount of $2.5 million, as well as the partnership with the private and other levels of government, to only be borrowing $7.5 million over only five years is a phenomenal, phenomenal testament to the, to the planning that has gone into this project over many decades, and allows the city to be positioned that in five years this will be paid off, and there'll be flexibility to move forward on other projects as well. So I'm very happy to second this motion.
Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
Nothing further.
Yes, counsel, as, as both Counselor Penner's have, have said, this is very exciting. It's a huge project for our city, and yes, we are reaping the benefits of many, many years, like a whole decade, of working on this. When I, when I, when I take inventory of what I mostly talk about when people come see me at the store or, or just in passing, there's two things that are talked about, is COVID and this. And mostly, I want to talk about this because this is exciting. And this is one of those steps, this is, it's just like, you know, all the other things we've had to do, like the, the, the design contract, that's one step. This boring, having this, this venture in place is, is key to this project getting done, and I have to reiterate what, what Counselor Penner said, $42.5 million, and we're only borrowing $7.5. Like, this is, it's an incredible deal for the residents of Steinbach, and that's why this is, it's just an exciting day that we can actually vote on this. So I'll call for the question, all those in favor? Opposed? That is carried. We have 9E, the bylaw 2128, this is rezoning of Harmony Lane, we're going into first reading. The, this starts on page 30 on your package. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, which particular file are you asking for?
2189, this is Harmony Lane.
All right. Yes, bylaw 2189 is a proposed rezoning for development that is proceeding in multiple phases, generally known as a area of Kennedy Avenue in Steinbach. It is proposing to rezone the subject property from DR1 Development Reserve 1 to RSF Residential Single Family. The parcel is currently also designated as residential policy area in the city's official community plan. Recommendation is for counsel to give this rezoning bylaw first reading, so that a public hearing can be scheduled for later on this fall.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Siemens?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counselor Hebert. Go ahead, Counselor Siemens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, we continue to need building lots in Steinbach, and this will provide that, and it's taking, and rezoning Development Reserve, which has been set aside for residential development, but it's changing it from Development Reserve to Residential Single Family. So this is first reading. Upon approval of first reading, then a public hearing will be scheduled at a future date.
Anything further, Counselor Hebert?
Further to what Counselor Siemens said, this is a good project, it's phase 11 of numerous projects over the past couple of years. And as stated, it's the south portion of Harmony Lane, excuse me, Harmony Lane, and it will develop another 37 new lots. So obviously, our market in the housing is demand-driven, and that is why the request is, the variance is before counsel.
Thank you, Counselor Hebert. Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing, Counselor Siemens?
Mr. Sir.
Okay, we'll call for the question, all those in favor, first reading? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, counsel, we have 9F, this is bylaw 2190, 14 Ellis Avenue, this is rezoning, and it's first reading. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
This application for rezoning with designated bylaw 2190 at 14 Ellis Avenue is proposing to rezone the subject property from RLD Residential Low Density to RMD Residential Medium Density to allow for the development of a multifamily building on the site. The general proposal is to develop a four-unit structure. While this has been, this property has been the subject of a previous rezoning application that counsel had denied, the current proposal is different, with a reduced number of units being proposed under this bylaw. Recommendation is that counsel give this bylaw first reading, so that a public hearing may be scheduled.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve first reading.
And second by Counselor Hebert, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it is only appropriate that, since there was quite a bit of public feedback last time when this file came to us, that we, allow this to proceed as an adapted, an adapted floor plan to the, to the location, and allow the public and the neighborhood to give their feedback on this.
Anything further?
Nothing further.
Anything further of counsel? Yes, Counselor Hebert?
To administration through you, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
You read to us here, and on page 41, it states it's a four-unit multifamily structure. Page 42 of this document, this page says, read the very bottom, says it's one building consisting of six units. And then again, on page 49, it says a fourplex, and it says previously applied for a sixplex, or was that an eightplex?
The previous application under bylaw 2152 was for a six-unit residential structure. That would be an error in that report, based on the information that we have in the application. The applicant is proposing a four-unit structure under this application.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
Nothing further.
Okay, counsel, I'll call for the question, all those in favor, first reading? That is carried. We have 9G, this is a resolution for September 30th, the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Mr. Mayor, this information and background begins on page 55 of counsel's agenda package and continues. There is reference to both a federal government media release that was dated July 20th, 2021, and a subsequent provincial media release dated September 3rd, 2021. Both levels, senior levels of government has, indicate their acknowledgement of September 30th being a day, a national day for truth and reconciliation, and that it be recognized. There was some interest to consider this particular matter with respect to the City of Steinbach from city council. Therefore, a resolution has been drafted in that regard and appears on page 55, and if counsel is considering the particular matter and wishes the City of Steinbach to also recognize that day, the, the resolution is provided for consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Counsel, would you like, Counselor Swagster?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will make the motion, I'll move the motion as written here.
Okay. Do we have a second? Counselor Penner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city manager had noted, both the Government of Canada and the province of Manitoba have recognized September 20th as a, as the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. And so therefore, the resolution, the first part here in the resolve says that the City of Steinbach recognized the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation on September 30th as a day of observance regarding the impacts of residential schools in Canada. Mr. Mayor, I believe this is an appropriate thing for us to do as a city. I think we recognize and appreciate the important role of Indigenous people in Canada, they are the original peoples in, in our country, and there have been a lot of mistakes made by previous governments, very serious mistakes. And one of the biggest mistakes was the establishment of residential schools. They were horrible, profoundly negative for the vast majority of students who attended. And it was in 2008 that former Prime Minister Stephen Harper delivered an official apology for the creation of residential schools in behalf of the federal government. It was at that point that they established, announced the establishment of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. That commission spent several years investigating and researching residential schools and the impacts, and delivered its report in, in 2015, and also issued 94 calls to action. One of those calls to action, in fact, I believe it's number 80, is that a holiday, an day of observance like this be established. And of course, it took a long time for the federal and provincial government to move in that direction, but now they are. And so because they are moving in that direction, and because we are also a level of government, I think it's appropriate that we also recognize this day. And the second part of the motion here says, be it further resolved, that with the exception of facilities and services that may be determined, City of Steinbach offices and services will be closed for that day, and the city will follow Government of Canada protocols for the half-masting of flags and city buildings in observance of the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. So I think this is an important step for our city, and it's appropriate that we, that we move in this direction, so therefore, I do move.
Anything further?
Yeah, I would just like to comment that, you know, the trauma of residential schools is generational at this point, and it will take generations to overcome and resolve. And the least we can do, I think, is have a day, an annual day where we recognize and have to pause to consider and reflect on what happened, and hopefully that will continue to remind us to move forward, that it's not just, you know, with the discovery of the Amark Graves in 2021 that we think about this, but that it's an ongoing discussion so we can actually move forward with healing.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
No.
Well, counsel, I do agree with this, and I do think that this is a very important day, and that we need to honor this day and recognize this day, and, you know, healing and forgiveness starts, steps, it starts with a decision, and the decision to... and forgiveness starts, steps, it starts with a decision. And the decision to be different, the decision to do differently. And, and one of the, one of those decisions is this, is this day of holiday, a day of reflection, a day of remembering, a day of walking in someone else's shoes, and, and thinking of what has been done. And, you know, we can, we can, we can rise above this. We can make right. There can be forgiveness, and there can be healing. And, and I think it, you know, every, every small step along the way completes a further step of that healing. So I do, I do support this. Call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Are there any questions of counsel? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To administration through you. Go ahead. Thank you very much. Mr. Workteen, is, has there been an indication or an update as to branch construction finalization date?
I have not had any specific date provided by our engineering department. My last understanding was that the project was anticipated to be complete by the end of September.
Thank you.
Anything, any further questions of counsel? There are no correspondence and petitions. There's no other business. Looking for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Siemens, second by Counselor Penner. Call for the question. All those in favor? That is carried. Next council meeting will be Tuesday, October 5th, 2021, at 7:30 PM. Thank you.